And we're gonna call for one sec, just gonna contact Trustee Ocho by phone. Call the board.
Mr. Ray?
Yes, ma'am.
I received a request from trustee Paul to... Oh, I gotta keep it down.
He got behind me, but you just had another one.
That trustee Paul has requested to attend this meeting electronically. Uh, her reasons is ill. If the board agrees, then I will get her involved.
Okay.
Any objections?
Any objections in the board members about trustee Ocho joining by phone?
No objection.
No objection.
All right. I'm gonna send the call and then I do the votes. Oh, you can't lock it in?
It's on the side.
On the side.
Give you a lock on it.
You wanna make sure you don't move that lock, right? If you change the wrong thing, I'm gonna...
Right.
Hello, hi trustee Paul. How this is working? The meeting has started. Now to the trial.
No comment.
Okay, thank you. Take care. Take care. All right. She won't be able to join.
She won't be able to join. Okay, phone call please, ma'am clerk.
Trustee... Trustee Williams. Present. Trustee McFerrin. Present. Trustee Paul Scher. Trustee Thompson. Present. Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Here, who is?
I'm here, ma'am clerk. Let us please stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Ocho State. One nation, united in the heavens, with the mercy of the justice of the law. All right, I got some fucking comments tonight, good people. Not yet? Vivian Covington, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just moving away at times. Is there a motion to approve the minute? Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Thompson and...
I gotta give you some...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Let me, I just, there was one correction I wanted to make.
Which one?
Um, it was the minutes for the... For the meeting where we approved for the lawn. It stated that I said that deck was good, if we could just strike that. I don't, I looked, I didn't say anything about that being good, because it's in the minutes. But other than that, it's...
What's the date of the minutes?
Uh... Check, let me check, let me check.
September four, June?
I was... Sept- September? Um, it was... It was, I wanna say it was September meeting where the village manager, I think I got it right. Page... September twenty-sixth, page two. Hold on, let me look.
Take your time, take your time.
Oh, okay, when you look down, it says, um... However, when he went on Saturday, he found the deck was in good condition and the ground was down in good shape. Uh, I might have mentioned the deck, but I didn't say it was in good condition. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't think I said, "So, if we just strike that." I don't think you, I don't think you read that meeting out of clerk. I think they had a debt in the clerk, but, uh, what's your head? So, it would be page two, I'm sorry, page one, under E... Dash eight, one A.
One A. For September, for the special meeting for... I'm trying to find.
Right, it would be September twenty-sixth. Meeting.
The special for the regular.
Right, and then, there's this motion to... Uh, for the agreement, for decree maintenance of the golf course. It's right in the middle of the pair.
Trustee?
Yes, ma'am.
Which seven minutes? September?
Twenty-sixth.
Special for the regular?
Special meeting. We needed a special meeting to approve that contract for the lawn, uh, for the lawn cutting surgery.
Right, right.
Right. Right. And it just so happened, someone put, I said, "The deck was good," and I think regular without that, and had to vote for it. The deck could be repaired, so I wrote that. That wasn't a bad word for me.
A page?
Uh, it would be page one, under new business. About in the middle of the pair.
You wanted to strike that for a not in good shape?
Yes.
Not in good shape.
Not, not in good shape.
Yeah, ma'am clerk. Yeah, it's been a long call. Long call, please, ma'am clerk.
Trustee Williams, on side. Trustee McFerrin.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson. Both sides. Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Paul.
Both sides.
Both, both sides, actually. That the minutes? General public. General public, comments. Vivian Covington, please.
We've been here for... And you saw them in the agenda tonight, first of all, I want to thank the mayor and the village manager for attending the seminar that all of the lawn was there. I'm sure she gave a lot of information. She was, she's a graduate of... A great college, and she was phenomenal, and she worked for our comptroller, and it was great information. Uh, too bad, goodness, about, uh, not to be, to have the whole of it. But it was something to...
Goodness, come on.
And then, I also...
Oh, sorry. I understand you as well.
Uh, okay, all right. Uh, there was a seminar there, and she was a great, professional person, all the information that she gave. Um, our trustee was there, Julie Thompson herself, was very, very good, um, there and I know, and I will put it on our site, our neighborhood, so we can see it. Uh, tonight, I know there's something on the agenda, but the mayor last time, he's not there, he talked about, I don't know, are you going to discuss here on seat reporting the mayor, or trustee Williams, clerk, and after appointment official commission and committees? What is that? What does that want to entail?
That? That is just regular.
Their comments.
Okay.
They're directly reported, but they were...
Should that be comments, it should be reports?
Okay, I understand, I just kind of, that, oh, not because on their, the call, it was listed, and we did discuss committee commissions. You have a sign out there, it's flashing, the last four years, this make, you want community volunteers in that? And people did volunteer, I was one of them, and some other people here in the audience as well. However, I don't see it on the agenda tonight, is there any reason it's not listed, so people can be, start being active on the news? There any reason it did not make the agenda, we discussed it, we don't know.
We moved it for office, all right, it's not meant to be honest with you.
Madam clerk, you guys took on the agenda, the madam clerk, and the clerk.
Yes, we moved it forward from the last one. It was not on the table, that I received.
And people are really eager to volunteer in their community, but you're not doing it. And then you say, "You don't have enough people to come to an attending meeting," or a budget meeting, and that, and then you're here, but we still don't... What is it gonna take?
Well, well, Mr. and Mrs. Covington, I gotta say, that I did challenge it, but I didn't have any problem on holding it up, so if it's not on there, we'll put it on the next year, it was just a typo, because it did move forward from the call. It did move forward.
And who knows what's gonna take on the shit?
Well, I mean, I'll take on the shit, I'll take it, you know, but I'm a mayor, I'll take on the shit, but it was not intentional.
Are there people looking at this work, managing the mayor, or by the side, did the board, did the board notice it? Anybody on the board noticed that it was there?
Ma'am, ma'am clerk. Yes, ma'am Covington, uh, I would say that when I did get the agenda, uh, it was noticed that it was not on the agenda. Uh, we probably, well, you said something now, but I'm quite sure, we were gonna say something later on, then. It wasn't on the agenda, but it could be pleased to have it on for next agenda, but apparently it came up in general comments, or general public, so... Uh, I'm saying that I know, and remember, four of us did not see it on there, because we anticipated on voting for appointments tonight.
Okay, that's, when did you get the agenda? Let me ask. Saturday?
Oh, Friday, Saturday?
That's not good.
It's time to ask you what it was.
You know, it was the same time.
We never got the same time, but, um, okay, I think that's a little bigger. But still, don't, don't discourage people, because you say you want people to join, so we're here to join, and our heart is here for our members, so I hope it gets on the agenda. Hopefully, and no problem.
No one's discouraged.
No, absolutely. Sandra Hurd?
Okay, I have similar opinion, because one of the reasons why I was here tonight, is I was told that there would be, uh, appointments of communities, but I didn't see it on agenda, except for at G, and I thought maybe that was it, but that's not it, obviously. So, again, I, I, I agree with, uh, Vivian on this, I think if people are signing up and willing to be a part of the meetings and stuff, they should be discouraged, and it should be, we should have people on there, so we have meetings, because I think if you don't have people, you're not gonna have meetings, right? Okay, so I think that should be, uh, put in the forefront. Um, I did have a question on F three D. Uh, when you're talking about, you're gonna be discussing retiring the surplus of tip five, I wanted to know what is the surplus? And then I wanted to know, are they, have they been paid before, uh, they, the surplus, or is that what you're referring to? That they have not been paid? And then I had heard, I was at the township board meeting, uh, last Thursday, and they were saying that it was worse, that it was gonna be retiring tip five. I, I need to know more about that, why, and when are we gonna do that? And then, um, what does it mean when you have a surplus to the taxpayers? Does that mean money's coming back to the taxpayers?
Now, then, actually, what the surplus means, as, as we did like previously, just like in two years ago, I think we declared a surplus in tip three, and then, and tip four, and all the money that's in it, in those tips, when we declare a surplus, it goes to Will County, Will County puts it up in the census to all the taxing bodies. So, that's the same intention here, that will help the school get, get their goals and change by building a new state, and putting community, it'll help the village, it'll give us money, it'll give all the people in the taxing body, uh, opportunity to have some funding. And next year, when the tip goes off in tip five, they'll be in funds, there's an EAV of about ninety-four billion dollars right now with that tip. So, that's the plan right now, that's what we're selling.
All right, and then, is it true?
So, you have the tip three and the tip four reserved, Miss Hurd?
Say again?
You remember when we declared a surplus in tip three and tip four?
No.
You remember the rules?
I did.
Yeah.
We did, I think, uh, the village portion was, uh, to, the village portion was like, uh, I won't say the number, three or four thousand.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think nobody else would say it, but you and I would.
Right. About four, yeah, about four, about four thousand, that I can remember, the number I seen.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Bottom line, there's nothing coming back to the taxpayer, that's not what it means at all, in the surplus.
No, no, that's not what it means.
Okay. All right, and, uh, the other thing that I wanted to announce, uh, the board, uh, the Moni Township is having a shred day on Fri- on Saturday.
October Saturday?
October twenty-eighth. And it's from nine to twelve, it will be at the Moni Township parking lot, see you Friday afternoon.
Is that just for paper, is that for all?
Paper right now, they were trying to do it for both, but they only could give paper this time. So, it's for paper, they do say it's a limited number of containers, I, I asked them to do the ballpark, and they said maybe like four, four boxes or something like that. But it's open to the public.
What's the time again?
I'm sorry, it ain't over the time. From, uh, nine till noon on October twenty-eighth. All right, so the other thing is that when you do put it on the agenda for the, uh, communities, will it be done, will it go?
Actually, the part of it going at the county meeting, since, uh, it was a mistake, or somehow, you know, we do that at the county meeting, second, Tuesday, we won't even wait for a whole thirty days, we just do it at the county. Just do that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you won't be voting on anything, all right?
No, not tonight, no ma'am.
No, at the county?
Oh, yeah, we're for special inquiry, just for those certain things, yes. We'll get it done.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I was just wondering if you would then publish which committees and who the candidates are.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Mrs. Vinnie?
Hey, everybody. I appreciate, uh, Ms. Covington, um, and also, uh, Mrs. Sandra Hurd, uh, about, uh, the residents here wanting to be a part, there's enough people to be a part of the different committees and commissioners, and I do remember, have information about it, and I don't understand why it's not being voted on tonight. Don't understand it. Uh, the mayor is responsible for, uh, the agenda, and how you at that, with as much help as you have, uh, let that go, I don't understand it. Really don't. It's not fair to the residents that you go slap in your job.
I don't slap in my job, Mrs.
Yeah, you do, and we're not gonna go back before.
I'm not gonna go back.
Because I want to be a clown. Um, speaking of being a clown, um, I was very insulted, and others were insulted as well, with this gracious comments. We don't like your comments. Uh, your comments, and you, and you don't have to respond, I'm not interested in it, I just wanna just make you, make you aware of that. Uh, if we act a clown here, believe you me, and I'm sure you know, in the, uh, legal person here, uh, you know that we have perfectly legitimate reasons for acting a clown. So, if we come here, and the mayor, we see the mayor praising us, maybe you don't know him well, but he, we see where he praises us, then that's when we act a clown. And that's something I get put out, and I'm glad it, and that's gonna continue, because I'm gonna say what I need to say. When I see that things are being shoved and pushed, and you don't want things being said, I'm gonna, yeah, I want you to understand, and anybody else that's on the board, and in the audience, to understand, and just hear what I'm saying. Just hear what I'm saying. So, uh, please, nothing I would ask, is it necessary that this lady be here, each member be here?
Yes.
With other, with other, um, law firms we had, uh, those are rotation of lawyers coming. Because what I see in this, uh, legislature, is that she seems to be the mayor's lawyer, when he's not paying her, we pay her. We don't need her signing, and he's looking diligently at her to get her response, or give her to say stuff, yeah, we reach you. We don't need that, and for her to say, "We were clowning this place, that's like a clown, the clown show," it's unacceptable. You need to take a break, unless somebody else come on here. Thank you.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Mrs. Lawrie. Bobby, where is?
Good evening, uh, mayor, trustees, other, uh... Others. First of all, I would like to know, I see all of the, uh, trustees, the village manager, and, um, uh, other heads of departments, but I have yet to see the IT person here.
Yes.
And I would like to know, is there a reason why there's not an IT? Um, personally, I think that, uh... Ms. Diva, I'm trying to remember her last name, does an excellent job, however, uh, I think that the IT person could be here to assist her if needed, um, so maybe next board meeting, someone can answer that, or perhaps that person can be here. And we know that, uh, pay scales are discussed openly in this village, and he gets paid.
Very well.
Uh, yes, I would just say very well. The next comment I would like to make is, uh, I too, very disappointed, uh, about there not being committees, commissions, appointed today. Because two weeks ago, it was discussed, and just, I mean, everything else that was discussed two weeks ago is on the agenda, except for committees and commissions, and it just looks a little suspect. And the reason why I'm saying it looks a little suspect, last week, the police and fire commission had, had a meeting, it was posted, seven o'clock. I went to that meeting as a general public. The meeting, I was told, started at six forty-five, six forty-nine, unacceptable. It, it was posted for seven o'clock, it should have started at seven. Mayor, uh, I would, and you should know, how many commissioners do you have, active commissioners on your, okay? You say you have four, there were two people there that night. There was not a four, and they were voting on things. For me to have been the past vice president of the police and fire, whatever happened that day should be known and knowing, because there's no four, and... Well, I'm telling you, there was no four, okay? So, here, I think that you guys need to be careful about what's going on in the village.
I'll take that, absolutely. Gotta have one.
Two, does not make it four. And you got people that are well able and willing to be a part of these commissions and committees, and look, nothing. I think that you guys are being very successful in, in... I, I, I'll be finished. I think you're very successful in making people discouraged and wanting to be a part of this, and this is probably what makes this a clown show. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You are proud of our fans. Show is a clown show, but the law, you don't see that.
Um, mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm gonna use this. Um, I just wanna say that...
Trustee, now say, I ain't saying nothing. Uh, 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 I ain't saying nothing.
Pointing for Mr. Mayor, like that, I have a floor.
Yes, yes, sir.
Um...
Trustee, I'm sorry, I'm not having a block break either.
Thank you. I just wanna say tonight to the general public, I understand how you feel. When we received the agenda, I would say that those trustees that I talked to, especially the trustee that's not there, was very serious. She can't, I can't speak for her, how dangerous she was. She can't, I can't speak for her, how angry she was, but you can imagine that the trustees was up here wanting everybody to participate in the committee.
Really?
So, we do.
We do.
We do. If I, if it was up to me, and I was in control of the agenda, they would be on you. But I don't have that power. However, I'll just ask the mayor, can we make sure that the next time, that they're on there, so that we won't have residents upset and raffled to appointments again? I knew that trustee Volter, and there was some shade of words, but I think trustee Thompson, about appointments, I would tell you that, yes, we'd like to see people volunteer. The police and fire commission, let me comment on that as well. Y'all know I was chair. In fact, trustee, or excuse me, commissioner Greer, was there when we hired probably the largest number of police officers requested through the village manager. Not by us, but we did when we were told, unfortunately, I was happy. The higher, the highest number of policemen and firefighters. I would like to see that again. So, if I'm not mistaken, with this next appointment that will be coming up, it will fill the police and fire commission. I just ask that those who are volunteering to be a police and fire commissioner, do not miss their meetings. Stick with it, grind it out, because the police chief can't do nothing, and the fire chief can't do nothing if they don't have civil service firefighters and policemen here in our town. And I say that because you'll find out in our report later tonight, the firefighters, they are low. The policemen, I'll be, we not even gonna say how many officers there are. They are overworked. I've been there, done that, for two years, in politics, in one of the worst towns in South Suburbs. You don't sleep at night, but you come to work and do your job, because that's what's asked of you. So, Mr. Mayor, I apologize to the general public, this trustee Volter is not here, but trustee, on a personal phone call to me, or a message she sent to me, she was very angry. We will make sure it get done. I yield my time.
What about the meeting?
Thank you so much, trustee. Go ahead, trustee.
So, for Ms. Her, so, that's okay. Ms. Her, Ms. Hutchinson, Mildred, and everybody, uh, Miss Greer, everybody who volunteered, signed up to be on the committee, and the whole, um, please don't be discouraged. This is gonna take a minute to work this out, you know that's my thing, commit this, because I'm gonna say it for the test time. We need everybody's help, and their expertise to get this village going back in the right direction. So please don't be discouraged, and know that trustees are pushing this, and I'm saying this, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, and I'm always encouraging our new residents, who come into the university card, please get involved in your committee, this is for our new residents, please apply for committee or mission. We need, we got new residents, new growth, get involved in your committee, that's it. All right. Is there any, is there anything that anybody wants to remove? Is there anything that anybody might have?
Yes, like F2A and F2C.
Is there, is there particular reason?
No, no, no.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, everything else is good?
Yep.
All right, so we're gonna move, we're gonna move items, F2A and F2B.
C6.
And F2C. From the consent agenda, we're moving down under another item already. We'll have discussion of that and then change to other items. Yep. So, is there a motion for item F2B?
A, A, C.
A.
A, F2C.
No, 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 you say the other, the accent.
Yes, 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 yes. So we're calling F2A and F2C. Is there a motion on other items that are on the consent agenda, which we could, item F2B, F2B? That's it?
So you, so, Mr. Mayor?
Move by trustee Brooks.
Second.
Second by Louis. Roll call, my friend.
You said C and B again.
Trustee Louis.
Both are.
Trustee McFadden.
Both are.
Trustee Thompson.
Both are.
Trustee Williams.
Both are.
Trustee Brooks.
Both are.
Mayor Williams. Both, both, both are, my friend. All right.
I want to point to the B, what the agenda's been going on.
F2A.
F2A and F2C.
That's not what was probably, um, this was. We had the public comments already, so the public comment section is always down in the city's business.
Not when you say one other letter, and another letter.
All right, is there a motion for item F2B, a motion for the rising, no, F2A? A motion for the rising renewal of Blue Cross Insurance Insurance with Best of National? Now we're discussing, yeah. Yeah, we just discussed, make a motion for discussion, yeah. Trustee Joe? We're just, we're discussing item F2.
I don't necessarily have the problem with F2A, except for the fact that, it's just one person who came and gave a presentation. Madam Kirk, do we have an ordinance that says that we need three bids or three quotes when we about to spend a significant amount?
I'm not aware of an ordinance that states three. It's been a past practice, I'm sorry. It's been a past practice to attempt to get more than one bid, but it really depends on what it is, and if there's several companies that handle that type of business, but there is not one that's issued, or three.
Well, I think it's a good practice, and I'm sure there's more than one insurance company, and no offense to the person who gave the presentation, but, but our job was to make sure he spent his money right. And so, that's my objection, that you have one than one person to present for what, for the, for what we need.
Mr. Mayor, may I recognize you for a second?
What?
I wanna, oh. Yeah, I wanna...
I have two things up, and he was going up.
Bill's manager. Bill, Bill's manager, Scott. If you can, I see, this has been taken senior leadership on something that we may have done as past practice. This insurance company, how long has they been with us, and has there been any interest, or have you looked out to see if any other insurance, or any quotes of insurance, health insurance, universal power? The reason why I ask that question is because some of my colleagues do have, I guess, the number of three, they want to make sure that, we'll, we'll make it very simple, such as the golf course. Yeah, CHW moving out the counter, and his group, that was not much of an option. So they want to make sure that, when it comes to the insurance, that it's nothing like that. And that's just me expressing the thoughts of other, other officials. If you can help me with that.
Sure, so there were actually three, what's on there, trustee? The last packet that you got, there was Delta, and Khalil, I can't remember the name of the other, and, and this is not the company, this is Vista National Insurance Brokerage. The vast majority of municipality suits them, just frankly, because they're really good, but Blue Cross Blue Shield is still, it's expensive, so unfortunately, the combination of the last packet that was printed out, it was incorrectly printed, because it's all spliced up, and I've seen this before, so I'm just requesting that the packets be done in portrait, so that we can actually see it across the board, and that, you know, these questions have come up, because we did, they're just the broker, but they did come up with three different quotes, with three different companies. I can tell you that Blue Cross Blue Shield was still always expensive. Our insurance is standard to go roughly twenty-five percent, we don't change the deductible, I have to say this too. I have dealt with the reasons since I've been here, we cannot make these payments, they're very high. We're looking at a little under two million dollars a year. And I'm just trying to save the village the money. This would effectively save the village a little under forty thousand dollars a year. So, I think the insurance has been fantastic for us. Most of the employees do have the cross, we still keep the H and L, and the rates are still competitive, and yet still, so, we're looking to, I think it was thirteen percent, excuse me, but we haven't changed the deductible, we're going close to twenty-five percent, which brings us to two million dollars.
And...
And we repeatedly made payments, but we have to stress that.
Yes, yes, because we do not afford it. I yield my time, but let me make sure, I'm correct, those three were inside that cow package, am I correct?
Yes, they were, they were inside the original cow, but they, for some reason, they were sent in, in, not in the horizontal view, in landscape, I'm sorry, they were sent in the vertical, in landscape, in a portrait, not landscape.
And then, yeah, that has been...
And whether it was on, and the packet, I don't know if you still have it, I didn't bring it with me, if I have any questions, I'm gonna come forward with the packet, in that packet, that you, that packet that Khalil presented, those are what was on.
I got it, I got it. Um, let me just yield by also mentioning one thing, the price. It has jumped, under Mayor Hutchinson, I would say, we were at a million, now, we're just under two million. So I just want for to realize how the insurance has went up, and...
How it just went.
Yeah.
I didn't do it on there.
And I'll see you soon.
There's two, there's two major reasons for that, right? One thing is that insurance is just increasing across the board, and the second reason is we have very high exposures, we have some very high, extremely high clients that are our insurance to where we are. So, that's another reason.
I yield my time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, trustee Joe?
We have, Joe, we have the complete information, so we can lay on.
I got you.
Do you remember the packet that was presented? I don't even know, actually, do you have, you have a copy on you? Okay, yeah, it was given out to each one of the board members, but I have one in my office. I can make a copy, because it was actually, they binded it together, so I have to like tear it all in plastic, but I'll need to see if I can somehow make that happen, or put it on, send it to a electronic.
Thank you, thank you, that's a great thing, I'm sorry. If I, I don't understand what the problem is, I'm trying to put my new diligence here, so.
Trustee Williams?
I just wanted to say, having worked for Blue Cross Blue Shield for close to thirty years, I know the industry, I listened very carefully to whether the man was presenting. It was an excellent plan, I did see the quote for Delta, I don't know what the other quote was, but I understand that insurance has an honor, and that we're trying to get the best coverage for our employees that's affordable, and still gonna give them the type of care they need. So, and, and Blue Cross has recognized everyone. You don't want some generic company that people come trying, and then you know, oh, we don't accept that. So, I didn't see anything wrong with it, I think it was an excellent choice, excellent presentation, and that we need to move forward.
Thank you, trustee. And, and just a, just a little point, you know, there were some things that was found out, and some of the reasons could be, there were people that had been here in years, still in the insurance, like twenty years ago, they've been in insurance for the village to free, so, we kind of got that fixed, so thank you for your expertise, because I trust in your expertise.
Right, I'm gonna say that, but...
But I say the truth, all right? Say the truth, the truth is the truth.
The true truth, yeah.
Yeah, the truth is the truth. All right, so, then, is that all the discussion on that?
Deductible change, it's not only, it's not only passage, what's up there?
We can, we can, we can, we can talk amongst the audience, and we can have required plea. Oh, I'm sorry, I said, when we change insurance company, deductibles change, and your quality of healthcare is gonna change, your pool of doctors will change, and, but our employees have doctors that they've been going to for a long time, it may not be that they are working, it may, that may change for them, but some people are not comfortable going to new doctors, when an old doctor don't think they ought to. So Blue Cross Blue Shield is the top of, it's the best that we can do. She did have a post while the doctors were there, and it still, it still came out, and then there were some things with employees, past employees, that was in the street, she cut that down as much as she could, she worked differently, folding three insurance company, literally. And Blue Cross Blue Shield, even though we, we talked about, Julie, Blue Cross Blue Shield is the best that we have right now. I yield my time.
All right, so, Madam Kirk, listen, is, is there a motion authorizing renewal of Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance with Best of National? A motion, but I have two things we just discussed, authorizing renewal of Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance with Best of National, is there a motion? So, move by trustee Brooks, second by trustee Lewis. Roll, roll call, my friend.
Trustee Louis.
Both are.
Trustee McFadden.
Both are.
Trustee Thompson.
Both are.
Trustee Williams.
Both are.
Trustee Brooks.
Both are.
Mayor Williams.
Both are.
No should care.
All right. Thank you. I get this microphone, really, so. Yeah, so, item F2B is for discussion, no, it's F2C. All right, who has the, has the full, trustee Thompson, picture?
Yes, I have the same, the sign, I have the same signature, because Ms. Barry, introduction that's fellow, credential, who else didn't look at it? And that's always been my thing, who else didn't look at it? So, that's my reason.
I'm stating, stating point, that's, that's my, I mean, trustee.
Anybody else have questions or comments regarding Ms. Barry? Drop a, trustee Brooks, you got something?
So then, yeah, well, I'm gonna go ahead and bring it back to the village manager, just, you know, trustee Thompson did express concern about it, and I did, if I did, I gave my understanding that Ms. Barry would be a contractor setting up HR force, and I think it would be for six months, six months, a year. Okay, so, Ms. Scott, did we go to South Suburban Bears Management, anything, if you can just give a detail?
So I did ask around, I did ask several people, including other people in the communities, and I did get the recognition, not recognition, but, well, some did recognize an individual, I really don't want to say the name, because, but I don't mind talking to people, she just did not have the experience that we needed in asking questions, she was not very familiar with a lot of human contracts, she did more work with... She did more love with um, with privatized individuals. I can get you that person's information because I actually met with this young lady lovely two months ago. Uh, there was another person that came upon recommendation. She was remote, she actually didn't even live in the state. Um, she also didn't, I just didn't feel comfortable um, in asking questions as it relates to police fire, teamsters. Um, she really didn't have a lot of knowledge, but also was concerned that she was out of state because obviously laws were different. Um, I also asked her after coming in part-time, she said that she would always be available to his room, but it would really be possible. And sometimes um, in my humble opinion, in these circumstances, when you need someone to come in and in order to find, um, find something, uh, pay scales incorrect, um, membership lists, reunions are incorrect. Um, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. I think it would be service someone disadvantaged to hire individuals to just come in um, and have to deal with that. I don't think, I think we need someone who can provide structure. I think Ms. Barry, her track record is proven, you're always, I didn't even bother to bring those other two people forward because it was just not even. It wasn't good. Um, I have no problem forwarding those emails because it was literally um, over two months ago, I met with those people. Uh, Leslie came highly recommended and speaking with her, I was extremely comfortable. Uh, she actually educated me on a lot of the uh, updated uh, laws and mandates. Uh, she and I had a sense of conversation about things that I would expect and then coming to this office. Uh, she said she would be available coming in, um, literally hitting the ground running after this fourth meeting the following day. So um, it's really difficult for me because I'm tasked with being the golf course manager now, which we hired a whole person to do that, right? So I'm tasked with doing that. We have events coming, I'm also handling the events. I'm also now going out to give proposals for law period program and trying to recruit uh, individuals that can be trained by Derek Creed or by Glenn Woody. I've had those conversations with both of those um, organizations. Then you have to think of the fact that to the overall finance director, although we do have some uh, group there now. I am doing some of that stuff. I still have to go into the banking council, I have to deposit pay, I need to shake waters.
They do have a master.
Then you have to look at, um, you also have to look at human resources.
Does she have a bill? Does she have a bill?
A lot of these positions, I'm sudden until we get someone in. And I'm gonna tell you, we desperately need an HR consultant, so.
Yes. Um, thank you, Ms. Scott. But she, I yield my time. I just want to say.
She be quiet next to him, that's what she's like.
I appreciate you answering the questions for Trustee, uh, Thompson. Well, it doesn't. I, I, for me, let me say this. You did, and if I'm not correct, you did post for HR and also post for finance, correct?
Yes, and it's not currently posted because we've gotten over eighty resumes. Um, less than five have been asked for experience. I posted for six positions. That includes public works director, finance director, human resources consultant, um, front desk reception. Uh, I can't remember the other ones. Um, code enforcement officer and also a um, a maintenance tech for public works. Those all currently posted on our menu. Uh, we did get vast majority of our applications off indeed, and he had those prior. But they really don't get the return for municipal experience that you do online. So um, we reposted it, it's still up, you can move on there right now under I don't know classified, so you'll see that on there. Um, it has been up for two months. So we're gonna continue to put it up there until we get some qualified people. I'm not putting anyone in there that doesn't have insurance qualifications and not fit for that major. I have people applying that just don't have the qualification, so I'm not gonna put those people in that position. Wait for it.
And and I just want to, I just want to, uh, I just want to take everyone back to twenty fifteen. That's, that's eight years ago, right? Nine, nine years ago, well, almost nine, let me say this. When I came in at seventeen, the village manager basically was your finance director, the HR person. If somebody was there, she had, they, they got a thousand of them, Johnny Townsend had a thousand titles. But it was the board of the past. So it was forced to move forward. Um, yeah, I, I do believe that we, we do have to take those measures of uh, taking the first step. Change is not always easy. A lot of people are not gonna like it. Um, but as far as HR and the situation that I knew or the situation I know, as far as the village, it's, it's poor. I worked in two of these counties and I can tell you, half the time, employees come here and there were benefits. Errors already being made because you had two, three people doing one thing. It's not just the village manager, you had other people, personnel doing two, three jobs and expecting the village and expecting the village itself to operate function properly. So um, I'm just giving my opinion that when it comes to it, you know, we have to do something, then do nothing. Because that's what's been going on for quite a while, nothing. Everyone is accustomed to nothing. And they have their ways, it's like, it's like bow outwards. I yield my time, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Williams.
Yes, I wanted to say, um, I listened to her presentation, I asked questions. I know she has a full track record because I looked up a lot of information on her. I know someone that has worked with her at Richmond Park. And as far as I'm concerned, she will fit the bill. She had the right answers. She's worked with unions, she's done workshops. She said that she would definitely make sure personnel, if there's any matters between the employees and management, she will get that straightened out. So and this is something that we've been lacking for years, for years. When we had one before, that person didn't last long, unfortunately. But this woman has a track record that's proven and we need to move forward. I remember Ms. Scott telling me about the other person, but that person, virtual, that's, that's not what we need. We need somebody here on hand that can get the job done, on site, on site, doing it. We have a lot of problems in this village and they have no one to go to. Before you had somebody that was half union and half management. Okay, what habit are you wearing today? Are you gonna sit on the side of the union or are you gonna sit on the side of management? I don't know who, who I, what you are, you wear two faces. That don't work for me. Let's get the job done, let this woman come here and clean up city hall, village hall, whatever hall, mess hall. We need to.
Exactly.
Maybe I'll clarify my statement. My statement was never that. Ms. Barry wasn't qualified or even the best person for the job. My only point is that Ms. Scott looked at some other people. She never told me that she looked at some other people. And I just think we need to look at more than one person and get the best person who can do the job. It's not, it's not about, it's not, can't, when I don't know about the other people.
Right, and I get that, and I understand.
And that's my only point, I don't wanna be laboring because it's taking, it's, it's too much. It's just that I wanna make sure that, that, that we look at more than one person or thing and get the best, my little job.
That's my.
Correct on that.
All right.
That's it.
I agree with um, Jill Williams. Um, Ms. Scott interviewed different people and she brought us the best person.
Yeah.
All right, candidate for board members.
And I can say this because I know a person that personally definitely irresumed and I forwarded to Ms. Scott. So I know that she was looking at other people because I had a lot of information on that store, a lot of people invited me about it. And I submitted those resumes to her and I know that she did her diligence to try and get the best person for it. No, not the person for what you're saying, what you said makes sense. Yeah, interview other people and she did that and she brought the best one to us, yeah.
All right, thank you, board. All right, here we go. Motion, authorizing contraption agreement, that's the barrier as human resources consultant, is there a motion?
Motion.
Move by McFadden, second by Lewis, rogue call, Madam Trump. Trustee Lewis.
Both aye.
Trustee McFadden.
Both aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Both aye.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
I confirm.
Yeah. You're not making that joke, man. You're not making that joke, man. I'm both aye. Both aye.
He's trapped.
You're hanging in there, huh? You're getting attention.
Mayor Williams. Mayor Williams.
Both aye.
All right, we got, well, we got some stuff here, all right. Here we go, our bills table, attached bill.
We're gonna have to read it.
Two D.
Two D and B.
A motion, okay, here we have the discussion. Jill, this is you. F two B, this is a motion authorizing uh, we get all that. Yeah, that's my thought.
We have a meeting here tomorrow, not have a meeting in the meeting. We're trying to take your business up here.
That was a real case. Everything to the system.
Yeah. Only thing that was necessary for me to send it to them is that, that was the session.
I think you skipped off a beat.
That was, that was a second.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yes.
So now you're trying to be a little safer.
I'm gonna be, I'm right, all right. All right, just for the record, two D is uh, this agreement with class, but the human number six that was approved of the consent agenda and that is resolution four twenty twenty-three dash. That's fair. Thank you, thank you, Madam Trump. We got the, yeah. All right, now we got the bills table, attached bill group is a list of general. Thank you. Operating expenses for the village of University Park that occurred on September twenty-seventh, twenty-three through October twenty-fourth, twenty-three. General fund, four one seven, four eleven, eleven cent, twelve thirty, four thousand, two thirty-one and thirteen. Town center fund, five thousand, five eighty-eight, fifty-one, capital project one, three thousand, two sixty-three, fifty. Tip five, two thousand, one ninety-two and fifty. Grant two, total of four twenty-two, sixty-six and seventy-five, is there a motion?
So.
Move by Lewis.
Second.
Question, Trustee Thompson.
So um, those, Ms. Scott, so if I hit the page, when you hit the page, uh, eleven, well, some of the collars, some of the collars are out of order, I can.
We're not trying to confuse you.
Which uh, which, you said it, uh. Okay, I can't pull up, it's like, it's like, it's like double chopping.
Sprint.
It's like, can't really tell what, what, then some stuffs are out of the catalog.
Are you speaking on the.
It's not a, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a.
Okay, which ones are you referring to, Trustee?
Look at page eleven.
Okay, I do see it. For some reason, it printed out incorrectly, but it is on the, it is correct in the online. I mean, you know, the digital form, but for some reason, it, it did print out properly. Am I correct in saying that, Madam Trump?
Yeah, we, I don't know.
Yeah, it didn't look like this. When I looked at uh, at the uh, the digital form that all everyone received, the board received.
Yeah, we know what you're talking about.
So specifically, just to let you know, I can, I can read it, it's, it's kind of, it's hard, but I can read it. So there are page ten, is that correct? Starting with ten, you were going to eleven, okay. On page eleven, you have mowing carts and equipment that range from ninety-one dollars, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars, five oh nine, three thirty-three. Uh, one cart is, what is this? Then we have the uniforms, uni- uniforms.
Okay.
That's eleven. The uniform, that's for uh, public works uniforms. We have police oil, that's for the oil, whether we use for our, you know, our tanks. And that's the company that we use, police. We have comment payments, one, two, three, several comment payments, Aqua Illinois payments.
Okay, uh, so should I have to make a report?
Yes. So they, so there's a roof reimbursement for an employee. Actually, they had to purchase uh, roofs because they got transferred back to public works. And then you have uniform service, which is in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. That's public works, cleaning uniforms, also uh, three hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Um, that bill for one thousand, one hundred was for more than one month, it was for a couple of units. Then you have police oil supplies. And then you have Comcast, utilities, down payment, police oil, nitro gas, Aqua Illinois payments. And that's for each one of our buildings. And then there's also one on there for uh, medical reimbursement for an individual that was injured while they were worked. I don't wanna say individual, it was somebody in public works that had to go to the hospital that sliced their finger. And then um, furthermore, it's the Freedom First Aid, that's a first aid kit. We're paying them off for whatever we open. I cut that off, I know I'm gonna be providing medicine uh, in village hall, I think it's probably, so we're finishing that up. Um, and we're gonna have to, we're just evening them out. And that's Freedom First Aid.
Question.
I didn't, I appreciate the fact that we have each and every purchase order that I can see this for. And for her to have taken the time to do that, it gave us a clear picture, breakdown of who Aqua, who the bill was. The purchase order was there, so we don't have to ask for that anymore, for shame. Everything, I appreciate that.
And for transparency, do you have purchase orders now that I sign on my phone?
I appreciate it, yeah.
Rogue, rogue call, Madam Trump. Trustee Lewis.
Both aye.
Trustee McFadden.
Both aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Both aye.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams.
Uh, votes, votes I have, but. All right, thank you. So our last item on the agenda is a discussion item and it's item F maybe the declaring surplus for tip five. Opened up to the board, any questions regarding surplus?
Is the gentleman from uh, district two, one U, still looking to get uh, that mall or he was trying to get their money, girl, for the sports uh, arena he was doing?
If, if we declare a surplus, it will give them an opportunity to move forward. And when it actually closes to its closing date, then everything will fall into place and everything. when it actually closes to its closing date, then everything will fall into place and everything will work out fine. This will be a great start. It will help them, it will help, it will help all the taxing entities in there, in the, in the, I think it's six taxing bodies I'm thinking of. Yeah, so everybody will get their, their income. It might wind up in a million bucks. I don't want to say, don't quote, we don't say it, but. Go ahead, trustee. Can I have another call, trustee?
So, so has, has the village done anything that we're supposed to do to be able to, uh, are we talking about calling the girl or next year? And if we, if we do it this year because of time constraints, that you know how the schedule runs on a time scale, then does that mean that we're going to lose two million to dollars?
No, no.
So has it been the first question, has the village done whatever it is required to do?
Yes. As, as far as what, trustee?
As far as that, uh, whatever reporting you have to do, whatever payments you have to do.
Yes, I, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, our payments are up to date with our, with tip five. And there's some things about closing tip five early that might not be advantageous to us after doing a little homework, which is declare a surplus now would be to our backs to get a little working capital for all the taxing rights within the district.
So next question. If we declare a surplus, then if we declare a surplus, that doesn't immediately have to go?
Right, right.
We can wait until it closes.
And, and until it's, uh, until, right, right.
Yeah, Tom.
Ladies first, you know, trusty books is a gentleman, so he, you know, trust.
Um, yeah, I mean, if you want to, uh, I.
Is that the conversation to allow for you?
Well, I, I'll give mine and shut up. Um, I had to do a little homework, uh, I guess tip five had been a, uh, it's been, it is, it's, it's, it was on my radar when we first came in as far as being one of the tips that were close to bring money back to residents and ease up their tax break. For those who are not sitting in this chair, you sit on that other side, is a public official. What you're looking at is revenue coming in, revenue, uh, expenditures, money one out. And I would say for me, since twenty seventeen, I am tired of looking where we have to tighten our belt around eight million dollars. It is just so hard to do. Then to even further the fact that misman- mismanagement of money along the line. It, it, it really, eight million dollars, trust me, is, it just seems like taking money and just throwing it in the wind and watching it go out. Tip five, I've seen, you know, I've seen it as once it was closed, it would, it would, it would bring revenue and the money, the taxes. Because really, at the end of the day, you won't are financing this town. These other companies are getting breaks. They're asking for their reimbursements. I can tell you that when I first got into office, uh, reality with me that night, when the law firm was explaining the lawsuits that we have on our books for the amount of money that we owe in the tips to those companies for those reimbursements. I think even since then, since marriage has changed, I think millions of dollars, I think we had to deal the first two years, I want to say nineteen, twenty, I can't remember which, which companies it was, but with the re- tip reimbursements. But when you see these things, it like, for us personally, we still have these agreements that we still are obligated in tip five. I've got a couple of phone calls as well before I got here, um, where from people who are, when it comes to speaking of reimbursements, if we close the tip early, that's from one of us, if we close the tip early, it will be a problem because if I'm not mistaken, we have not reimbursed everybody over there like we're supposed to. Is it right? If I'm not mistaken, we have it. So we still have some obligations that we need to take care of over there before we even go that route. But I say this because I really don't creep on me tonight. I want them to know that many of the board members want to see them have a new sports facilities in, in building. Once again, as a culture two-two-seven scout and coach there with the Richie's Rockets, I've been there, I've seen it. When you have an eight-and-no football team, but the stadium is basically inside that box where you're still wearing a coat and you're talking on a headset, you're so cold, you're like, you might as well be standing outside, talking down to the head coach on the headset. And I mean, I believe that not just me saying that, I've seen better facilities as a head, as a, as a freshman head coach. We done went to the better stadiums and more, what we say, affluent.
Affluent or whatever.
Right, and then communities. So we want to, we want to do the same thing, but I just want to make it that, to let the residents know that I was looking forward for tip five to close when we have obligations that we need to meet, that we have to pay. And especially to my understanding, some of those tip agreements, I keep hearing the word vague. We didn't, we didn't create the tip, we did not create some of these tip agreements. We just did it.
We don't want tip five never closed. There's only nine more, business is more. Eight million dollars, it's close to eight million.
I'll, I'll yield my time, Mr. Barry. Um, and just for correction, I don't think I said tip five is closed.
No, you did not.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure I said I was looking forward to when it closed.
Yeah.
I, I did, I, I thought it was the same, so this is all, this is all, this is all good dialogue because it's, it's a, I don't know if I should put the reason out or not, but I need to put the reason out because it, because it's a fact, I don't, trust me, I mean, my, your legs go right out here at the work.
So we've had a lot of discussions, um, when I say the mayor, uh, Bert Olson, John Kasper, uh, Attorney John Murphy, in regards to this tip, first we were about, uh, from John Kasper's office. And you're correct, trustee, in saying that, uh, a lot of these agreements are really vague, right? And that was a big discussion in here. Um, some of the notes that I took was that, uh, some of the, some of the agreements are vague and, and we need to review what they're charging to the tip. Uh, we need to confirm that all of these things are tip eligible. Uh, the other thing is, I know there's roughly, I think around eight agreements, right? I'm there, one percent, seventy-five, twenty-five percent. There's one that's ninety percent of that right there, and saying that one is ninety percent, I believe, right?
Some are ninety percent, ninety-five percent. Tip five is a little bit more, I was saying.
Right, so, um, I want to also note that in tip five deposited this year was eleven million, seventy-three thousand, twenty-six dollars and forty cents. Uh, currently, tip five has thirty-four million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventeen cents. So when people talk about, uh, the tip.
I'm adding other things.
She got to go.
Okay.
She got to go. Ms. Miller? Hi. Again, I'm leaving. Okay.
So continuing the discussion, um, so, um, in, in conversations that I've had with Kathy Law prior to her leaving and the attorneys and whatnot, since around the time of two thousand and four, there have been incentive of the transfer on tip five. Uh, I'm not going to give it to the man that accepted the tip. Um, I wasn't here during those times, uh, but there have been interfund transfers. And from my understanding, it was from the tip to the general trying to pay for payroll, whatever it was, I wasn't here. But that's kind of the reason why when, um, with these tip reports that we have to submit to the state, it's hard to get an attorney to sign off on these tip reports. Who would want to do that? Who's going to risk their law license, right? So, um, you know, we need basically to display our opinion on, for example, tip, tip, the tip report for twenty sixteen. So when I got here, not my member, we sent over the tip report to the state, they kicked it back because they got in a letter, an attorney gave one of them out, but nobody wants to do that, right? Because a lot of those, uh, some of the interfund transfers are not going to go into that. But, uh, also some of the things, the notes I want to speak on is, um, the total tax rate, which does not include the tip element, that tip element is fourteen point zero-nine three-six percent. Of that, the school district is about fifty-three percent. It would receive fifty-three percent. The village is about thirty-two point five. Uh, if you took two hypothetical surplus distributions, which is five million and ten million, at five million, the school district would get about two point six million a million and the village would receive about one point six million. At ten million surplus distribution, the school district would get roughly five point three million and the village would get three point two five. So I'm saying this, um, we're looking at declaring a surplus, we're not sure exactly how much that's going to be. So John's team is literally going through these tip agreements, reviewing them for accuracy, um, as well as Attorney Murphy, uh, the mayor, myself, Attorney Murphy, John Kasper, uh, Bert Olson, we were in a meeting for so many hours this past Friday. Uh, we've had several home meetings, uh, trying to get this figured out. This isn't, it was determined that the tip should not close early, um, but it's now a good time that we get a jump on this time, ten million a week, and figure out what's what. Uh, this is going to be a huge plus for the village once we declare a surplus next year and we receive the twenty-four, money to twenty-five. So, um, I'm looking forward to this, to getting this patented and, and we're going to continue to work with the state to figure out how we can submit these tip reports. But once again, the issue with submitting the tip reports is we need that, that attorney to matter. Thank you.
And, um, I just, I just want to remind the general public that, I can't remember, what was that, uh, Corvus? We, we, we overpaid, it was not, I think it was watching someone else, we overpaid.
Tip five or?
Yeah, yeah, it was seven fifty we got back, what was crazy?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Right. Right. What was crazy, for those who don't know, was that they didn't trust us to the point that we had to make a list of things.
Right, and they went on the right way.
They wanted, they wanted to make sure that if we gave you a person to park something back, that, that, that we gave them. Before we get to, to tell me in a letter, I mean, I shouldn't want to do with a community such as venture, venture bar, cuts and grabs.
They asked, well, they, they made a list of what, they says, you can do this, you can do this, you can do that, you can do this.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's our duty and so that's, 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 yeah, that's why I want to speak to you like that, but, you know, with this board is that, you know, we want to make, we want to make sure we careful, uh, because tip five has been a problem in the past. But, you know, on my standpoint, I, I definitely, uh, want to see this, uh, come through with the school district, uh, because like I said, to me, uh, this is the first, second year I'm not coaching, but I would say that, you know, we, I coached within the South, uh, South, South, Southern Southland Conference. There are some non-conference games and me personally, uh, I can't name all the schools that Richie's bred, but I can tell you this much, it is some nice facilities. And I'm just telling the public that your children are all with us, working with them on, you know, when it comes to crime and so forth, we do have to give them something to look forward to on a Saturday or Friday night because I, I've been to towns up north and oh my God, I mean, a more community comes out and I mean, it's an atmosphere that we've never seen before.
It's intimidating to visit.
It's intimidating, you know, uh, we lost a couple up there north, but, you know, but I yield my time, we just need to be a little careful with the money in five.
Absolutely. All right, all right, anybody else here, any other discussion regarding tip five? If not, go to those who are reports of officers and just, go ahead. No, no, that's not motion there, that's just a discussion on the agenda. Yeah. To get a good understanding of that video. So that's it, the discussion regarding tip five, our very, uh, reports from the chief, board trustee, then we just move on up.
And there it is.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, he got ready, like, you know, he got the handle, like, ready. I wish the library would come like that. Um, I just like to say, uh, to everyone, I have four items. It's my choice, uh-oh. I, I, look, I'm going to put the timer on.
I'm going to put the timer on.
Give, like, under five, we're going to get rest. Five, five minutes. Under five, I promise I'm going to go. Um, Halloween, I want everyone to be safe. Um, chief, my special message go over to you, you still here?
Yep, I'm still here.
But, well, this is really all the way out. Yeah. I, I, last, last Halloween, uh, as always, I always have candy. Much of the players, my football players grown in now, so I don't even know why I have candy, you know? Me, really, to be honest, it's my excuse to have candy in house and so my hand hit the digging for candy. Yeah, yeah, stop. Um, so with this Halloween, chief, please, I don't know how many we have, please, my daughter, I, to this day, I will always think it was set up, I don't think it's because of election, I don't know. My daughter, Carter, sitting in the driveway, twenty-two years here, I watched these boys walk around the corner from the neighborhood and bust her window out. Yes, and keep going. For those who know my daughter, she don't, she don't get in politics, she don't talk to you, she mind her business. She's, and in fact, she's not a little girl no more, she, she's a little woman, but my point is, is chief, if you can, let's make sure Halloween, nothing like that happened again. What was crazy about it is the same officer that came, first came to the house when she was a little girl for a learning, it's the same one, had to come back almost fifteen years later to take a report, someone smashed it out and went back later on Halloween. So that's to say, lights on. Number two, since I last seen you, I took a trip over to Monee for the Emergency Management Agency, uh, program. Um, what I liked about Monee, uh, I, a former officer that was here is their director. We have it in our budget. I really, I really want to get this going, man. I really want this EMA to go as well as community, uh, policing, uh, community, community service officers, CSO. So in taking a trip over there, I was so amazed on how it's been ninety years. And I had a tour of inside their garage, um, their office, their training area, the equipment, I hate to say it, their equipment, they're, they have all the more equipment than we do. That's what I need to understand. So in talking to Mr. Simpson, because Chad was, uh, president of the Monee Mavericks, so it was even better that I personally knew him when he took me in there to give me a tour. And I spoke to the village manager about this because they operate VHF radios over there. The cell phone, I see the bill we paid, I don't mind there if we have directors and trustees having phones and your chair of the police or fire commission or certain commissions, but employees, I think that, like, we had a waterway break. It took two hours before it was a response, but I believe when it comes to real-time service in the village, if we were at least operating on VHF radios, then please, I'm talking about please, I think that there's. I think that there's a better response and a better communication across the board. If you drive a vehicle, it's a city vehicle, you should have a radio. I don't understand why we don't do it. I just don't understand. And if you did, what? See, I don't know why we got away from it, but I would say that, again, the emergency management program, I want to get going, as well as the CSO. I'm not gonna go, this got right right now, this whole plate is full of food.
We can do that, there's money out there.
It's money forward, all you have to do is hire a director. And allow the director to start to establish it. But, no, it took them nine years to come up with a bus, saying it's a bus, um, to warn people up, uh. They have a bus, they have a ATV, they have five, six vehicles, two of them trucks. I mean, we need to be, we are so far behind. And don't be saying, that's just Monee, we're not even gonna say the creek out there. So it's embarrassing, matter of fact, a week after the election, there was an accident on Western in University Parkway. Who came to help Monee? Because we didn't have enough police officers to help out there. So that tour really, um, was something that really hit home for me, that we are way behind. Next, uh, Niva, can you zoom in to our, uh, it's a pop-up coat and clothing giveaway. It's from ten twenty-four, which is today, right? Until ten twenty-six, which is Thursday, right, correct? It's gonna be at New Hope Community Christian Church, forty-seven hundred West Court Street, that's right here. Um, on the corner in Monee, and it's from twelve PM to six PM. I'm telling you, there's plenty, plenty of coats, I think, uh, I have to take my hat off to my wife. She has been working on this with a couple church members for two days now. And there are bags and bags of clothes, so I know we have Zoom on in right now, so no one will miss out on this, as Niva has gone in. And Karen is watching right now to make sure I do it, or I'm gonna have that chicken when I get home. But, um, if everyone could please, um, uh, take a trip, or if you need to, give me a call, seven oh eight, nine two one, four five seven seven. That's seven oh eight, nine two one, four five seven seven, if you need any further assistance, or getting clothes and clothing, or coats and clothing, um, as they have been busy. The last I have a comment on, and this is me, because the press is done, so this is not gonna show. The consent agreement from our group. Yeah, I, Penny, let me ask you this, Penny.
Yeah.
But let me make a comment. About two people, and I'm not looking to get on Channel Seven news or anything, but let me tell you something about James Glasgow and Kwame. None of them spoke to us before this was done. I asked, you may, you said, no, Karen, have you heard from? And I know for a fact that Mayor Hyman was there since day one, and Kwame, I never, I never, I never even seen heard from on the call. So, yeah, see, I don't know if Karen mentioned.
I seen that one time.
Now, what's, so I just wanna say that I'm a little bothered that they think this much of us when it comes to taking care of University Park. Your kids, a point was just made, similar. How many formulas were made with land in the water? And you telling me that we only work how much?
A half.
Yeah, don't say it, don't say it.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, but it's, it's, yeah, it's just the fact that I'm not happy, it's not sitting right with me. And I just wanna say, Madam Kirk always tell us the power that we have, even when we on this board. You all need to vote. If you don't vote, you can't, don't, don't complain. When something is wrong, don't tell me, oh, I didn't know. Yes, you did, you just didn't pay attention. These two gentlemen, I know Lex was up for election. I promise you, I'm promising y'all, I'm about to be a juror, and he'll find out soon. I'm not happy. So, man, I give my time, the residents, you know, what they're proposing, I don't like. And if we can, as a community, let's fight harder, because once again, how many times we can fight? You hung on the phone on Attorney General, you said, how much is our money worth? Yeah, I know back then, the mayor and I were just, we might have our own trust, we can do this, but that's this. But when it comes to the people, we do come together, and we wrote a phone, he had excellent point. What is it gonna take for you all to really care about what's going on at University Park? Then when he was quitting, he was yelling. And I literally, I guess the phone, you using the phone in the office, I heard a car was slamming. Attorney General was quiet, the state attorney, everyone was quiet on the phone, and I forgot which one though, well. I said, who's right? Let's move forward. How many, uh, we asked, man, stop the, make the, uh, the sewer calls. Do us a favor by taking the sewer calls and cap it like you used to. I just got a bill, it's only being here. Boy, we some clean people, 'cause that bill was a hundred and sixty dollars. And I'm like, what? A hundred and sixty for five thousand gallons? That's, that's ridiculous. But my five minutes is up.
Yeah.
I made the promise, that's why I got y'all. And then this is my, I give my time, that's my report.
I'm gonna put me back off, uh, trustee Brooks. The mayor did go to court, uh, last week, he was not pleased with what they were saying. So we, as a board, please read your backings, so we can counter, and together, as a board, to stand strong of what we want for University Park. We are working diligently together, we brought this package to the board, so they can take a peek and add their, their suggestions, so we come collectively as one. When we do go back to court. 'Cause if things are fixed there, it's ridiculous, it's, it didn't make sense. I also want to say, um, Saturday, October twenty-eighth, um, stuff, Monee's office is starting the veg Friday. Free, my plan, drive number is six thirty to eight thirty. Truck and trailer is from three thirty up to six, approximately, while supplies left. There's gonna be free hot dogs, first, second, and third, best costume. Uh, the spooky schedule is starting at four PM. We're gonna have like a little costume parade for the kids to come out to win prizes, and the movie starts at eight thirty. Please join us at that time on Saturday. Also, we have shop at the top. Saturday, December sixteen, at seven eighty. Uh, with soliciting cash, gift cards, a nation to spread Christmas cheer to Cremoni School District families. School District will select children to shop at the top. Shop will be at Walmart, Country Club heels. Um, if you have, uh, any questions, please contact Chief Mitchell, seven oh eight, five three four, zero nine one two. That's Steve Mitchell, at university dash park, I E L C dot com. Toys for the time. Toy and holiday dinner basket giveaway by the Mayor's Office of Special Events, it will be here at Ninety Town Center. Uh, registration is by email, please email us at mayorsofficespecialeventsone@gmail dot com. If you have any questions, you could contact us at seven oh eight, five seven one, thirty two eight. That's also December sixteen, from two PM to sixteen. Registration for the toys is December seventeen, please register the kids for the toys. Uh, the dinner baskets will be given away on December the ninth. Mayor's Office of Special Events has partnered with Beacon Hill Community Service Holiday Dinner Basket Giveaway. The deadline is December the ninth. It's Saturday, December sixteen, from two PM to sixteen. Please register at seven oh eight, two nine five, zero eight one two. Or you can scan, there's a paper on the table, you can scan this to register. That is all from my board.
Trustee Topps saying, JT.
So last Thursday, um, village manager, the mayor, myself, Mayor Claverton, we all attended a workshop that was, um, put together by that was put together by the controllers office. A lot of the conversation was about, I'm one who I knew this lady, Dixon Lord, who stole. Well, they don't know really how much she stole, but they ended up like saying she stole fifty-three point seven million dollars from that little tank. Um, they, they just couldn't even get it all together. So the main takeaway for me was that anybody who is, um, on the village board or accountable for money, we must be just that, we must be accountable. So they sold all our stuff, they got as much money as they could, which was not the hundred and three point seven. But they also sued other people, that town sued other people who shouldn't have known. She had some shaky-looking checks, she had some shaky-looking invoices, and other people had to pay millions of dollars because they were accountable for making sure that, um, everything was right. So I want for me to be accountable, I'm not trying to be adversarial or something like that. I'm going to be asking questions, I have like ten, eighty questions rolling around in my head. I don't want anybody to be offended, 'cause I'm gonna ask questions. 'Cause I'm not gonna be, my, I don't want my name on the news or nothing like that. So, um, I will be asking questions, making documentary requests, and I expect to be seeing no documentaries. It's not personal, it's just business. That's what I'm expecting.
All right, and the name of that movie is All the Queens.
All the Doors, one of them.
If you haven't seen, watch that movie, it's, watch over on the streaming.
Still got it on Amazon, I think, Amazon.
The book.
Manager Scott, I mean Chief, Gang Thing Tonight, and his gym. Oh, I'm sorry.
Gina.
I got this guy, this red guy, Trustee Williams, I'm sorry.
I've seen a red light on.
Yeah. I thought that was a Rudolph moment. I thought that was a Rudolph moment.
Okay, um, I wanna say that I too agree with, uh, Trustee Brooks regarding, I feel everybody knows us, my passion. And I want to see this village get what they deserve, fresh, clean, water, at an affordable price. They have continually gone up on our rates, and they're making us pay for their respect. So we can't let that continue to happen. The other thing I wanna mention, and I just spoke briefly to village managers, God. Uh, we know the mileage from here. Uh, from what I understand, it's about sixty of them, and I think they're staying in ready for it to make a meaningful accomplishment.
All right.
I just feel like, you know, we are all God's children. I think we need to welcome them, we need to have a day where we can let them know who we are, what our resources are. I see these children going to school in the morning with flip flops on.
I'm saying that.
One girl, her flip flop was torn. Can I have everyone's attention, people are talking. Uh, and it's sad to see teenagers, young people, in flip flops and sandals, but that's all they had. And I just feel like we, as a community, as a village, they are family now, whether we like it or not. You know, we talk about charity starts at home, but for years, people have been homeless or whatever, and I didn't see anything being done. Maybe an occasional cold drive or something. But I just think that we should embrace them, help them, make sure they have everything they need to get to where they're going. So I am, uh, personally reaching out to Pastor Joy and other people to join in this endeavor. I'm gonna reach out to Deborah and others, and I would like to see that we have one day, that we can have community leaders and people embrace them, help them, and get them on their way, that's all I'm saying. I don't think that we should shun them, or act like, oh, well, we, we're better than them, or we got our own problems. We need to help them. The skills, I mean.
Resources.
Oh, that's, that would mean. I, I wish people would be respectful, talk about.
Yeah, trust these people.
People are talking, and we're trying to make a point, that is wrong, and it's incorrect. So please don't do that. Thank you.
All right, Trustee, thank you. Okay, Madam Metaf.
Okay, hello everyone, um, I would just like to mention the bingo ice cream social that we had with the seniors. Trustee Karen Lewis and I got together, um, Keely, and it was fantastic. We're planning another, I don't know if we got the date set yet. But, um, Blue New, please come, it was right here, we had a great time. And Blue Cross Movement was here as well. Um, secondly, I would like to mention, um, Hong's works, worker Sam Jenkins. Um, the life on my block, Harvey Girl, had been out, he had been out for a few days. So once we called him in, he came right out, but when we found out, someone on the harvest had, had cut something back there, and that's made him have to do more work. So I'm thinking he's gonna be out there for like thirty minutes, he was out there all day. So I just wanted to thank him for doing a great job. And, um, I did thank him, and, um, he was very appreciative of it, um, one of his coworkers came out to help him. He thought it was something simple, he was gonna be able to do, but it wasn't. And, and Karen Waynefield was there from Blue Cross Movement to, um, bingo and ice cream social. Okay, she's a clerk in that village. And, um, last but not least, um, I am a faithful worker, and we're having a singles event on November Friday, November third, about seven PM, and then on Saturday before, all married couples will come about ten o'clock. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. Last thing.
Thank you so much, Trustee. Chief, you got your guy in there?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Clerk, trustees, other department heads, and citizens, I'm glad to be here, thank you. We'll go start off on a good note, uh, in the past couple of weeks, three officers from our department received awards from, uh, for excellent police work, including lifesaving awards and department commendations, those are the highest rewards that our department can, uh, award. Uh, we want to recognize them at a future, uh, village board meeting. Uh, our backgrounds, hiring, recruitment is ongoing for a lot of police officers, we, uh, we're working diligently. Uh, our entry level test is November eighteenth, and it's gonna be here at Ninety Town Center. Still got time, those, uh, eligible applicants still eligible applicants still have time to pick.
You got, you got, you got a button on the side.
There's a button on the side, just switch it to lock, and then you can just press down.
Thank you. Um, those wishing to be a police officer for entry, uh, level, there's still time to pick up applications. They can go to, uh, Google line, A and B, and, uh, follow the, uh, instructions, and picking up applications, uh, downloading applications from cops and fire. Uh, we're looking to, uh, make immediate hires, and so, uh, this is a good place to be, uh, to start. And so, uh, this is a good place to begin, uh, to start your law enforcement career. So anybody who's listening, if you got a son or a daughter or a niece or nephew that's on the couch and maybe you're basically eating up all your food. If they're in the kitchen, when you're in the kitchen, send them to me. I got a job for them and I'll have, I'll give them a career. Oh, you have to be at least twenty-one to thirty-five. Twenty-one to thirty-five. Uh, we won't be looking at that, that close. Uh, we have a SARS exam that's gonna be coming up, uh, early next year, um, early in, uh, 2024. We will have a date for that when that's announced. Uh, we have forty squad cars that have been delivered. They're at our upfitter in our, uh, local upfitter Federal Signal. Um, and thanks to them, because they're, they're putting us ahead of the line. I don't know if you've been by Federal Signal a lot. They have hundreds of squad cars from many, many, many police departments throughout the country that they're upfitting and they're putting us at the front of the line. So we want to thank them. Um, just yesterday, uh, we, uh, police department signed an agreement and partnered with the Crisis Center of South Suburbia for domestic violence and crisis services. It's free to the village. Uh, it just allows them access where they will come in, uh, several times a month, review any incidents of domestic violence in the village, and they will reach out to those people that are, were involved in some type of domestic violence crisis and reach out and offer them services. It's, uh, free to the village.
Who are they coming?
Oh, Crisis, the Crisis Center of South Suburbia.
It's a visiting.
Yes. And so, um, they will offer services and counseling to, uh, and anything else that's needed, including emergency shelter if needed for those people that might be, uh, involved in a domestic violence crisis. Also, uh, that's been, and that information, including their hotline, will be put up on the, uh, police department's website and our, uh, social media, uh, through Facebook. That'll be put up there. Additionally, um, police department's partner, Spanish Center of Gill County, offers services for our immigrant guests. Uh, they came out a couple of weeks ago in a formulary game plan to provide assistance for those families, those families in there. Um, also, the University Park Police Department, we recognize, uh, October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month and it's commemorated with a special pink uniform package that can only be worn this month. But I brought some samples for our village board.
That's nice, that's nice.
That must start out.
Yeah, but, so for police officers to wear.
That's nice.
In October, in October only. Uh, so I want to make sure that the village board saw this. So we support breast cancer awareness and we want to make sure we do everything we can by showing our support. Um, I just got a few more things, I'm sorry. We're starting our campaign right now for New Year's Eve, don't shoot. What comes up must come down. It's a felony. We will prosecute. Uh, I know a lot of people in a lot of communities think, oh, well, it doesn't, you know, the law is suspended during New Year's Eve. It's not. People get hurt all the time. There's property damage all the time. We will be out, I will be out. Anybody who catches a shooting or they catch with guns, we prosecute to the fullest extent of the law and we will put them in jail. It's a felony. So, and shooting and gun, even if it's up there, is considered a violent offense. You could be held, you could be held in custody. So we want to make sure we're starting it now. We're formally, I'm messaging that we'll go out, uh, to every way we can to let the, uh, community know what we're starting at now. I conducted a chat with Chief, uh, at Thornwood House. It was open only to residents of Thornwood House. It went well. Um, uh, that's a community, uh, that in that building had felt that they were, um, ignored. And so we, uh, brought, uh, uh, information and services to them to help them with their lives. Um, our training regimen is upkeep. The police department answered, uh, and so far in the month of September, six hundred and sixty-one calls for service. We made, uh, several arrests and, uh, several dozen citations. And, um, lastly, I attended the, uh, training conference with International Chiefs of Police. That ends my report. Oh, uh, I got, I got, I got it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, Chief.
Um,
I just want to know, I see you with them pink patches.
Man, right there, you know, as I was saying, fire department always taking care of you. When is PD gonna be good to me? The second PD.
PC Max?
I'm gonna sign.
Okay. I just want to like show you. Cause, cause Chief Chelios, I got hats, T-shirts. It's time for y'all to love Trump.
We're gonna be working on it.
Okay, all right, all right, just tell it.
And then lastly, um, I did want to talk about, um, a matter that was brought up earlier, uh, to clarify. I was at the, uh, police and fire board meeting and, uh, Ms. Greer was correct. It was not a, uh, call. However, there were no votes taken. Um, no votes were taken at all. Ms. Greer, you saw me there. Uh, and I'm really not sure if I'm supposed to say this because it's personnel matter. However, I'm hoping that I can get it out. It was just a matter of, we're in the process of, of, uh, making an offer and they just wanted to meet the young man. I asked them to be there just so they could meet him while I was making an offer. That's all. Uh, there was no votes to be had. There was actually nothing for them to do. But, uh, I felt it was important that they be there. That's all. So, um, and the reason why the meeting started earlier, because I had the young man sitting there for about an hour. I just wanted to, I don't want to take up any more of his time. I wanted to make the offer before it slipped off the hook. If that makes any sense. Okay, thank, thank you, Chief.
Call the call.
Chief, Chief, I understand. Chief Chelios?
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mayor, trustees, and here are the department heads. Uh, for the month of September, the fire department responded to two hundred and eighty dollars for service per month. Uh, one hundred and twenty-five EMS, sixty-five fire related, and eighteen or a few, uh, vehicle accidents of that nature. Uh, it brings us to, uh, one thousand seven hundred and sixteen calls for the year to date or for the, at the end of September. We are about, uh, fifteen to twenty calls ahead of the base of last year. So it's gonna be another busy year for us. Uh, cop enforcement had a rather busy month. Well, uh, they did, uh, inspections, activities at several places. Uh, fourteen total, uh, initial inspections, both rental and quit sale. A lot of the gates, uh, re-inspects that were done. Multi-family inspections are underway at Dynasty Apartments, Thornwood House, and Maple Leaf. There was a combined, uh, fifteen inspections that were performed there. Uh, there were three business license applications that were approved after being inspected. And we got, uh, twenty-six, uh, inspections for various building permits that are issued right now, along with, uh, twenty-seven plan reviews. Uh, same can be said for fire prevention. Uh, they were not getting a request to backfill inspections for cop enforcement, but they did, uh, four building, uh, business inspections on their own. A lot of, uh, annual fire inspections at Thornwood House and Maple Leaf apartment buildings. Uh, they got the fire alarm fixed and up and running at the golf course. Uh, they got, uh, some fencing and gate issues addressed and it was on their warehouse. And a little bit, uh, some previous planning that was done at the end of May because of the unique occupancy of that building. Public education wise, uh, we had, uh, quite a few activities for the month of October. Uh, Faith Movers Church, G.I. Shoes Daycare, uh, the National Tube Corporation. Uh, a couple of those to, uh, Fred Scott King, along with, uh, the library and Crete Memorial School. And these activities included anything from, uh, fire exit drills that were conducted and witnessed, uh, firefighters greeting to students and the library, along with, uh, touch a truck and firefighter gear demonstrations on the tools that we use and things like that. Uh, we have two more that are underway. Uh, one of them is also Fred Scott King. Uh, involves a coloring contest for students, uh, that will be, uh, judged and rated by the members of the fire department. And the winner of that coloring contest will get breakfast at the fire station along with, uh, a ride to school from the fire station and a fire truck. And then we also have the, uh, the truck or treat activity that's coming up on Saturday. We'll be present for that as well. And, uh, that's, that's about it, that's all.
Thank you so much, Chief. Manager Scott.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Ford. Here's my communication report. Um, I have continued communication with Five's website, um, for the phone app and regarding the website, but I'm going forward with that. As well as, um, communicated and supported departments with their ongoing initiatives, much of what you said, uh, much improved marketing and media posting. Uh, also, making all communications from beyond Fernando, um, from Comcast to be located transmission of the VCTV, the Five Zero Five University Property to Forty Four Town Center. Um, I've had a good chat with ABI. ABI is the company that will supply the equipment to, uh, broadcast our VCTV station on Channel Four. Um, this conversation is ongoing about pricing, uh, delivery of equipment and installation at Forty Four Town Center. Also, uh, executed a more leading audio system with the village manager, uh, assisted with the install, um, was the outstanding public works team. Special thanks to Jason, Dante, Martine, Jared, Sam, Keith, and Darrell, who assisted with that project today. Um, I also have a work with the liaison to the mayor, boards, and trustees. Uh, special events committee on their ongoing initiatives, marketing, social media, um, promotional events and male children communication, um, with the planning, uh, additional planning with the police and fire department, uh, for the trunk or treat and also the events that were mentioned by trustees. And finally, um, I continue to support the University Park Golf Club throughout their management transition.
Thank you, Ms. Nigro. Madam Scott?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few things I wanted to touch on. Metro stairs, so we had, we believe three meetings this past month with Metro. Uh, I was included in those conversations, some of them the mayor was also included. Uh, the Metro stairs are scheduled to start early November and be completed by early 2022. Metro will be investing one million dollars in tourist stations. Uh, we put up a bid on some of those, uh, meetings regarding the station and the condition. And the condition quite frankly that it's been in for, uh, very that time. So it's a million dollars, some of the things that are gonna be spent on there will be roof replacements, town replacements, stairwells, roofs, matches. So they will be posting this on their social media as you requested. Also, uh, they have places signage by the location. Please go take a look at Pine Lake. The south ground is fixed, it's up, and I heard you go, I love it, it's beautiful. It is the south ground. Um, also, uh, we have a meeting with Fabex and Secret Design regarding Regal Farms for the schematic, uh, design review, which is gonna be taking place in between, uh, eleven fifteen and twelve one. And the expected completion date, as we're slated right now, we're on schedule. It is for February of 2024. So we anticipate that when it is completed, it would be great if it was completed around the holiday. Uh, we will be having something special for the community regarding Regal Farm. Um, Town Center sidewalks within the next two weeks. There is construction, who was awarded that, who did, uh, that the trustees confirmed that did, that is going to start in the next, um, couple of weeks. Also, demo of the White House on Stumble will begin as soon as the permits are approved. They get applied next week, so that's all they're waiting for. Uh, the salt shed will be demoed as soon as the salt is removed. We are in the planning stages. We've been working with Brac Stone prior that meeting. We also, I have meetings with that and how it has to be done. It's like a science, uh, it has to be leveled a certain way. We're not gonna have to, uh, outsource that. It's gonna cost roughly nine thousand dollars. I am gonna be reaching out to the board for that approval because, um, public works is just not able to handle that job. Uh, it is not leveled properly. They said it's gonna create a lot of problems, um, and basically it's, it's not gonna last. So, uh, it has to be very precise. There's a whole science that goes into it as far as engineering, uh, so we're looking to, um, begin work on that. The deck replacement has been pushed back to early November. Miss Fifth, uh, Construction, who was the mid award, they're the ones that are gonna be working on that. We also received another grant for comment, power, and holidays. There is a five thousand dollar reimbursement grant. And we applied, uh, on behalf of the village for the Christmas tree lighting event. So the money has to be utilized specifically, uh, for that event and it is being used. Engineering for site path resurfacing, both on University Park Way from Kelsey to Crawford, uh, which is right by the interstate and, and the golf course. Uh, resurfacing project is between Cicero and Metro Station. So that would be beginning to send the engineering for that. The Oz lights, both for Regal Farms, going out to be shortly. The scope will include the ground related improvements. That includes the tennis court improvements, landscaping, and educational signage. Uh, we are going to be putting out the veterans memorial, R.I.P. back out because the person who was awarded the bid declined the job. So, uh, I think instead of going to the second and highest bidder, we'd rather just put it back out, or probably now. This is the time, because Trustee Conso mentioned that she wanted to have some input. So, uh, maybe she might be trusting if we can get together on that because we're gonna be putting that out soon. Also, the evening readiness cohort is coming to an end. Thank God. We have had two meetings for eight months, two meetings a month, every two weeks. It's, uh, it's been difficult, uh, but it was, I think it's gonna be worth it in the long run for the community. There was a really nervous article that came out, uh, highlighting University Park's efforts. Uh, they will be announcing the designation ceremony and I believe that we may be getting an award for this. Um, I have to mention that I'm really proud of University Park because, uh, there are many large communities that will not be getting an award for participating. Uh, so I, we will announce the date. We would love to have the community come out and support University Park and its efforts for ED. I think when people come out, they're really gonna see, well, uh, what a big deal this is. Also, um, Manny and Associates, who was hired and contracted by I.D.A., has nothing to do with us. Um, they're preparing to, uh, do traffic signal plans for Illinois Route Fifty, which is Governor's Highway and Molly Road and Cicero Avenue. And Governor's Highway and University Park for I.D.A. District One. The intersection, uh, Dr. Lee Road will be brand new signalized intersection, which will be railroad and interconnected. Uh, the existing traffic signal installation at Cicero Avenue and Governor's Highway will be modernized as part of this improvement that I.D.A. is doing. I got reached out to me just yesterday in regards to this project and they asked if we were interested in installing emergency vehicle preemption equipment for these two signalized locations. I know that they're gonna want this, uh, the fire department and the police department. Uh, that equipment is estimated to be at seven thousand dollars per intersection. So that's another thing I would be asking, uh, the board to approve a lot. I think that it's important for our community. A lot of people, um, probably already know this, but that, uh, Red Bull Crossing that is by the Metro Tracks, Metro East Line, is, uh, one of the most dangerous tracks in the entire state. So I can't reiterate this enough. Do not play. I watch every time when I go home and I'm, I'm coming to work. Without that, someone stops too close to those turning tracks where they're sitting on the tracks. Um, please do not do that. And like I said, it's one of the most dangerous tracks in the state. Uh, so we'll be reaching out about that. Um, the maintenance of the golf course is ongoing. I think it's been successful. We've updated the alarm system on the entryways, which, um, were out there previously. We have some upcoming events that we're planning there. I'm in the process of gathering votes for the long-term, non-maintenance equipment and, uh, along with the proposal, uh, that I will be sent to the board, um, and, and receive direction from the board. I did mention about five, uh, one conversations that we had. I did mention about two five ongoing conversations that we've had. I also want to mention, yes, we did go to, on October nineteenth, the Illinois Office of the Comptroller in partnership with the Illinois Government Finance Officers Association decided to co-deliver. I invite everyone to go. I think it was really informative. Uh, they had someone there, they had, uh, Paul Lopez from Old National Bank. They had another gentleman, uh, Joseph from DePaul University. They discussed principles for professional government finance, uh, with someone from the I G L A, uh, president and the finance director and the treasurer of the city of Lake Forest. They did show all the Queen's horses, which is by a fabulous young African American named Kelly Pope, African American female. I suggest everyone to watch that. She also wrote a book called Fool Me Once, which I'm impressed with reading. It's amazing. Uh, they had a speaker from Baker Tilly, uh, Paula Delano, who used to, uh, work here. And she works for the Illinois Office of the Comptroller and Bill Kling from DePaul University gave a great, uh, closing remarks, um, in that part. It was a fantastic opportunity. I also wanted to quickly mention, um, that the mayor and I, trustee Karen, uh, we attended both field for further conversation dealing with the airport. Uh, Reggie Greenwood, which many of you know is from the Chicago Southland Economic Development Corporation. Uh, he was there and he sponsored that. Also, there was another event and it was, uh, I have to mention, Mark Wood received the Silver Shuttle Award, uh, a very distinguished award. He was one of three, uh, that the Southland Honor, uh, mentioned in real estate. Uh, they said that he received the award for all of the investment development that he's done throughout the South Suburbs. So, uh, we're gonna continue to move the village forward. I'm excited about a lot of the infrastructure coming and, uh, we have a lot of other things to do. So, thank you.
Ms. Scott? Yes. Did we have a question about what happened to our equipment in our course?
So, there, the equipment was leased. I, I ended up speaking when I was reaching out to companies trying to get equipment, which is really hard to come by equipment. I ended up running into a gentleman who said that, you know, the equipment was leased. There was one piece of equipment that we didn't purchase, um, that was included in the police report. So that's an ongoing situation as well. Um, I don't wanna make mention to that, but yes, we do have, it was one piece of equipment that, uh, that was missing. I do have a picture and I'm gonna recite for that.
Thank you, uh, Madam Scott. And I'll be real brief, now, just some things that made a ward meeting. But yes, the village of the University Park does have a silent secret that is nothing that the village is going to ask for or entertain them. Fortunately, right now, they are not sleeping on the streets. They are occupying the vacancies in apartments that was, that we know as Ricky Woods House and Market. So we do have, they're saturated in our student district. And as trustee Gina Wade stated earlier, the humanitarian effort is there. Again, my same problem again is back to original. We are not doing anything for our homeless veteran or our homeless population. So that's one of the things that we can maybe work on and then capture that. A huge will make in Springfield that will cover our homeless population. Outside that, the humanitarian effort is there. I'm a child of God, we're gonna be fighting our people. One of God's biggest commandments is to love yourself as you love your neighbor. So we're gonna continue to move forward. It's about helping people. The airport is really common, the O R situation, we'll be getting back into the investments very, very soon. We got a pending court date November the third and our board will be having an exact possession, not tonight, but prior to going to court. So with that being said, is there a motion? Move our vote, say five. Madefan, all in favor?